Good evening and welcome to the City of Thousand Oaks Planning Commission Meeting of January 7, 2013. Will you please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic, the free and just one nation, united.
Will the clerk please call the roll? Commissioner Ferris?
Here.
Commissioner Turpil?
Here.
Commissioner Roundtree?
Here.
Commissioner Tapking?
Here.
Chair Reynolds?
Here.
Thank you. Now is the time for public comments, and if you'd like to speak on an item that is not on the agenda, this is the time to speak. And we have one card. You have five minutes. And Mr. Nick Kidwai, would you come forward and state your name and city residence, please? And welcome, and Happy New Year to you.
Good evening, Chair Darryl Reynolds, Planning Commissioners. I begin in the name of God, who's most beneficial, most merciful. My name is Nick Igbal Kidwai, resident of Newbury Park, and last time I checked, still Director of Concern, citizen of Thousand Oaks. Thank you for the greetings. I purposely missed a few meetings, but I did watch them at home, and I encourage other people to keep watching, because that is the first step. The Lakers will win, the Clippers will win. I know Mr. Ferris is having a good time. He's a wonderful, open person on Facebook, and I wish the rest of us could also enjoy life as much. It would be good. Then we won't be, you know, grouchy. Who likes grouchy people, right? In fact, somebody said that I'm -- I come with a scowl. That's what was said on the blog on Ventura County Star. So, I don't know. I'm serious sometimes, so maybe it's a scowl. If TO -- TV can show the overhead, I always like to use them. This is the Acon freeway sign moving forward. That's the only place where you can find the important news, only one. Star won't cover it. I would like to remind, I think the Council Planning Commissioner knows, that a planning commissioner was fired for voting to -- for the residents against that sign. And for the record, the Chair of the Auto Mall Association had said that if the parking project did not go forward, that she would drop the sign, or they would drop the sign. Also was said that the city is not paying a dime for the sign. And I think they're using the same analogy as this building, is that the land was paid for on $60 million of redevelopment debt. So that was free money. It was a wash. And the building is what was paid for by the taxpayers. It's just disgusting. And I wrote to the council last week, and as usual, even new council members, they are on board, no reply, to put it on the agenda. So it will be on the 30th, from what I understand. Want to ask if you are going to approve the minutes. It was interesting that on the December 17, there was hardly any, I think no citizens showed up. But on case number one, there were six cards. And I've been talking about this for a decade now. I think these changes were made by Mr. Fox, as to how to count the time and reduce it when there are a number of cards. And I've said, I mean, there are the scales of justice, and what they imply is that both sides have equal opportunity. When you put the citizens under the gun, and especially, I mean, it's ridiculous that, and Mr. Ferris was instrumental in reducing the time from two minutes to minimum of three minutes, is that when you give twice as much or three times as much time to the applicant, and the citizens get short shrift, it's not a fair hearing. And that's what is happening here. If you look at it, there are six cards. That would have meant that the time would have been reduced to four minutes if I came and spoke, or any other citizen came and spoke, when it should be five minutes, because and some of these regulars know that, they give cards for speakers for questions only. And there's no questions asked, or if a question is asked, it's 30 seconds. And it eliminates and reduces the time of the residents. And I know most of you run for Planning Commissioners is a stomping ground for becoming city council people. And if you represent the residents, I would hope that you would do something like this. I am going to try to speak on your agenda or the schedule, but in the 30 seconds I have, I would like to say that your report for what is happening in the city, schedule-wise, is blank, except for today. But the real report that used to be on the Planning Commission agenda was a development report that is about six, seven, or maybe, no, 10, 11 pages long. And it's disappeared. I tried to find it coming over here. In five minutes, I couldn't find it. That's where the meat and potatoes is, even though the projects are not big, but they are still projects that need, require attention. Thank you for letting me speak. Have a wonderful evening.
Thank you, Mr. Kidwai. Now is the time for written comments, announcements, and continuances. Mr. Town?
Thank you, Madam Chair, but I had none at this time. Thank you.
Thank you. And we'll go on to item 6A. Will the clerk please open case 6A? And good evening.
Hearing advertised as required by law is hereby open to consider agenda item 6A regarding case PPD 2012-70453. Applicant Eduardo and Maria Sotelo. Request to allow construction of a detached gazebo and first and second story additions to an existing two-story single-family dwelling. Location 940 Candlecrest Drive.
Thank you. And Mr. Lynn, you'll be giving the staff report this evening? Good evening.
Good evening, Madam Chair, member of Planning Commission. For your case this evening is a PPD application for a first and second story addition at 940 Candlecrest Drive. The request is for first and second floor additions, including a detached gazebo out of existing two-story residence. This requires Planning Commission approval, because the additional area, which is the first and second story added, exceeds 50% of the original footprint of the house. In this case, the total requested addition is approximately about 5,200 square feet on an existing 7,600 square foot dwelling. That counts a 68% increase, which exceeds 50%. Area photo of the residence is at the, is surrounded by homes and golf courts. This is the front elevation of the proposed residence on the left side, where the entry carport. The applicant is also requesting to increase the size of that entry carport area. On the left side of the front elevation, right above the garage, the applicant is proposing an expansion to include two bedrooms and two baths. This is a view of the rear yard, looking from the backyard. In this case, the applicant is requesting to, a single-story addition that would connect the main house to the left to a detached, existing pool house to the right. This is a view of a detached pool house that would be connected to the main house after the proposed single-story addition. This is a view of the elevation, the rear elevation of the house. The single-story addition would be to the right-hand side of this rear dwelling. This is a view of the slope. The proposed addition would carve approximately about six to eight feet into this manufactured slope. This is a view of the front elevation. This is a view looking north from the backyard. The proposed, the applicant also proposed a detached pool house to replace the one that would be connected by the addition. The proposed detached building would be located between the two trees right after the pool. The property is approximately about 2.3 acres in size, with about three-quarter of an inch, a quarter, three-quarter of the property it was graded. The proposed addition would be within the pad area, or on, you know, carved into a small portion of the manufactured slope. The rest of the natural slope are not touched. Breakdown of the first floor addition consists of movie room and an indoor sports court, the front entry expansion, and also a detached gazebo. The second floor addition would be consists of two bedrooms and two bathrooms. As previously mentioned, the total addition
Mr. Town?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just like to apologize that the wrong PowerPoint was loaded, so I asked Mr. Lynn to continue with the outline of the project, but based on his notes instead of the actual PowerPoint.
Thank you. Mr. Lynn?
Continuing on the total square footage, the existing dwelling, first and second floor, with the existing garage, is approximately about 12,000 square feet, and a proposed addition of 5,200 square feet, which will connect to existing pool house, making the total square footage approximately about 17,000, over 17,000 square feet. The applicant is proposing the colors and materials, including the roofing, would match with existing dwelling. A little bit of analysis to, on the findings of supporting, staff supporting the proposed addition. The subject property is approximately about 42 feet lower than the nearest homes behind the house. The proposed addition is about 22 feet high, making it pretty, not visible from the neighbors. Also, the distance to the nearest home is over 180 feet away. That would be for the second story addition. With golf courts to the south and southwest, making it less of a privacy intrusion to the neighbors. And the proposed addition does meet the zoning guidelines, which in this case, the second story proposed addition is 22 feet high, and approved existing is at 28 feet high. And the setback requirements of 20 feet in the RPD condition, the second story setback is actually 25 feet away from the rear. Neighborhood is already a mix of one and two-story homes, and the total square footage for the proposed addition, comparing to other homes in the vicinity, of about 6,000 to 18,000 square foot, so making this addition about the second largest within the vicinity. As for the floor area ratio, it's also within a range of adjacent homes. This project is exempt from the CQ, and in conclusion, staff recommends approval for PPD 2012-70453, based on the findings and subject to conditions contained in the staff report. This concludes staff's presentation. Staff is available for questions and comments.
Thank you. Are there questions of the staff? No questions? Okay, thank you, Mr. Lynn. Then we'll go on with our speaker's card, and I have a card from Mr. Steve Harrell, the applicant's representative, and you have 15 minutes. If you state your name and city residence, please. Good evening.
Thank you. Good evening. Happy New Year.
Thank you.
I'm the architect for the project, Mr. and Mrs. Sotello, and I live in Thousand Oaks. My office is in Westlake Village. And I know it seems like a pretty extensive room addition, but it's mainly a basketball court and a theater. So it's a project that they would like to do, and provide for a lot more recreational facilities on their own residence, in their own backyard, so to speak. And I think it, you know, fits very nicely into the existing structure and the existing terrain. And so if you have any questions on the project, I'd be happy to answer them.
I have a question. Are you replacing, it said that you're putting in another pool house? I thought it was a gazebo.
No, there's an existing pool house already that's detached from the main structure, and the basketball recreational facility is kind of connecting the existing pool house to the main house, and then we're adding sort of a gazebo, outdoor fireplace, outdoor barbecue area.
An open, an open structure, then, is what?
An open structure.
It was staff that said another pool house, and that's why I was confused.
And that one will be detached from the structure.
Yeah, right.
But that one is new.
Right. Mm-hmm. Any other questions of the architect? None? Well, thank you very much. And you'll have a chance to come back after we go back to staff for five more minutes, if you have anything else you wanted to add.
Okay, you're welcome.
Okay, we'll go back to staff. Is there anything else you'd like to add, Mr. Lynn?
No, ma'am.
Okay. Any other questions? Commissioner Ferris?
Thank you. I just want to get a clear understanding. The reason why we're here is because the proposed additions that are in front of us are above 50% of the original footprint of the home, right?
Yes, and that triggers a Planning Commission hearing.
And so what's currently there is a first, and there was, there must have been another addition to this home that had the second story? I'm looking at second-floor living area, 4106, from table one? Or is the footprint only, the footprint, not the square footage of the home?
The 50% calculation is based on the footprint only. The total addition, the proposed addition, would include first and second story, over an existing footprint of the house.
Got it. So it's not 50% of the existing square footage, it's 50% of the footprint, which is really only the first floor and the garage?
Yes.
Right, okay. And would you say, based upon the calculations in table two, that given the gross floor area, the lot areas, the floor area ratio calculations, it is unlikely that they would be able to do anything more significant over and above what they have, except for some maybe minor modifications in the future if this were to be approved? Based upon staff's analysis of comparing it to the area?
The, in this case, any type of addition, I, staff would prob, the proposed addition would probably not exceed 50% of the footprint anymore, since the proposed addition is pretty extensive. The unfortunate staff cannot answer whether,
Right.
how much more addition that the applicant would come in.
I'm trying to get a feel for, how much more, I mean, it's come before us, because it's a very large addition. If they incrementally did some things, it might not have come before, I mean, not the nature of this particular one, it had to come before us. But could they be incrementally moving things up to where they could, they could be pushing the far in the future? The floor area ratio.
Eventually, if the proposed addition keeps on coming in, it would reach a point where the staff would start noticing that the proposed addition would start exceeding the neighborhood square footage. However, at this time, since the pad area and the lot is, is pretty huge, there seems to be more room to, for proposed additions, and they will still meet the setback requirements.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Any other questions? Commissioner Turpil?
Yes, Mr. Lynn, just to follow up real quick, we are not increasing, or this addition isn't increasing, the actual footprint of the property, is it?
It is. The first-story addition consists of a, the sports court and the movie theater would increase the footprint of the house.
Okay, I was just following up on Commissioner Ferris' thought. I misunderstood. I'm okay with that. We're talking about the 50, over 50% increase of the existing footprint as the house sits today?
Yes.
Is why we're here?
Yes.
Okay. Let's see.
Okay, any other questions? Okay, then we'll go back to Mr. Harrell, if you'd like to come forward and make any other comments. You're okay with how the discussion has been, then? Okay. Then, any other questions of staff? Okay, then we'll close the public hearing, and now is the time for a motion, deliberation. Commissioner Roundtree?
I went this afternoon with Mr. Lynn to look at the property, and I guess what I was looking for is to see that these structures that are being built were going to interfere with a view of any of the neighbors. And we thoroughly walked the property a couple of times. There's no chance that any of these things that are being proposed tonight are going to interfere with any of the views. It's hard to tell from this picture, but it's almost, it's in a sink almost, where the surrounding property, the neighbors are considerably above, and of what's there, there are bushes, they're blocking it. So from a viewpoint of view, none. I also drove around the neighborhood. These proposed developments are not going to stand out like a sore thumb. It'll probably increase the value of not only the house, but also the neighborhood itself. That also would not be a concern of mine. So having looked at that and having read the report, I can't see of anything. This is one of those few projects that we've reviewed, where there's nothing to really make an argument about. It was difficult. And so rather than trying to manufacture one, I can say, there isn't anything here I would not be in support of.
Did you want to make a motion?
If there's no other. Then I'd like to make a motion to approve PPD 2012-70453 with the attached conditions set herein.
Okay. Comments to the motion? Any comments? Commissioner Ferris?
I'm in favor of the motion. My, I agree. I think the staff report is pretty clear about the nature of this. It's not going to, where this is, the neighborhoods, and the sizes of the lots, you know, there, it's not, the addition itself is not going to significantly impact the style and nature of the architecture in that neighborhood, and as Commissioner Roundtree has mentioned, may very well enhance it from where it stands. Based upon all the facts and things presented to us, I'm most compelled with finding number four, which ultimately says- four, which ultimately says that, you know, the modified dwelling will not be out of scale what the neighborhood will represent, and over intensification a lot. And therefore, the request would adversely affect the established development pattern. We have to be careful that this is a unique neighborhood, so this particular type of 50% increase of the footprint doesn't in fact impact it. Yet it might, in a similar, in a different neighborhood where they're closer together, and they're 2,000-square-foot houses, and someone wants a 3,000, you know, makes it 3,500 square feet or something. So there are, in fact, differences. I don't think it'll be something that'll carry over into different neighborhoods. I do want to, while I don't believe it is a problem with the floor area ratio, it does, with the addition, fit into the scale of the neighborhood. It does start to broach to be on a little of the high side. And so I just stated out loud, it's something that's probably, you know, if this were to be evaluated in the future of any future additions in this particular neighborhood, we might not want to push it too much. So with that, I'm in favor of the motion.
Thank you. Any other comments? Okay, maker of the motion, any final comments to your motion?
There are none.
Thank you. Please vote.
Motion passed, 5-0.
Thank you. And there is a 10-day right of appeal period on it. Thank you. Thank you, staff, for your excellent report. We'll continue on with item 6B. Will the clerk please open the hearing?
Hearing advertised as required by law is hereby open to consider agenda item 6B regarding case SUP 2012-70436. Applicant, Snapper Jacks, Inc., request to allow onsite sale and consumption of alcoholic beverages, beer and wine, at an existing restaurant, Snapper Jacks, with hours of operation from 11:00 a.m. until 9:00 p.m. daily. Location, 604 East Janes Road.
Thank you. And good evening, Mr. Chua, if you'd like to give the staff report?
Yes, good evening, Madam Chair, and members of the commission. Happy New Year, by the way. For your consideration tonight, it's an application requesting to approve onsite sale and consumption of alcoholic beverages at an existing fast-food restaurant, which is called Snapper Jack. The, as a matter of background, the subject property or the building was approved in 1979. In 2010, the Snapper Jack Incorporated took over the building and remodeled the building and provided outdoor seating. In October 11 of last year, the application for the alcoholic consumption was filed. The planning review is required for any, a request for alcoholic beverage consumption for, that's within 400 feet of any residential properties. This is the subject location, which is just on the corner of Janes and Moore Park Road. As you can see, on the northeast side, where the cursor is, there's the nearest residential property, which is about 320 feet away. The surrounding properties for the subject property are commercial and residential. The, like I mentioned earlier, the closest residential property to the northeast is about 320 feet. Police Department does not have objection for the proposed onsite sale and consumption, and they have submitted conditions for, of approval. As for the hours of operation, the Conejo Valley Plaza, hours of operations from 7:00 a.m. till 11:00 p.m. daily, except for Sundays, the closing time is 10:00 p.m. Snapper Jack requested operating hours of 11:00 to 9:00 p.m. However, staff recommends that we keep the regular operating hours the same through the rest, for, inconsistent with the rest of the project, so that they don't have to come back in case another property owner takes over and wants to operate earlier. This project qualifies under a CECL-1 exemption because of the fact that the request is only a minor change in the operation of the existing restaurant. Staff is recommending that the commission approve SUP 2012-70436 based on the findings and subject to the conditions contained in the staff report. Staff is ready to answer any questions that you may have.
Thank you. Are there any questions of staff? Mr. Ferris, Commissioner Ferris?
Thank you. Just on the hours of operation, the permit's going to allow them to be open at the same time. It's just now the proprietor could choose to do it at something less than that. And that's just for a convenience, to make sure that, as long as we think it's okay.
Yes.
To make sure that they have a consistent hours of operation for the rest of the plaza, right?
Yes.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you. Any other questions? Commissioner Trappell?
Yes, Mr. Chua, you mentioned the police department doesn't have any problems with this particular application. But I was looking in the packet, and it does talk about the concern about the consumption of alcohol on the patio, on the outside seating. And about that they'd prefer if the applicant had, and maybe this is a question for the applicant, but if they had a barrier around that outside area, I mean, has that been spoken to the, with the police department about that? I mean, if we move forward without that this evening, is that going to be a problem?
Okay, the police department's objection about consumption of the beverages within the patio area is because of the fact that the patio area has a direct access leaving the property, the premise itself. The police department would like to have the applicant control of where the beverages are being consumed. If this was another case where the patio was located at the back of the building where there's no, because right now, the way the building is oriented, the entry to the building itself is through the patio. So that gives people, you know, consuming alcohol the chance to walk away with their drink without being monitored. So at this point, we have a condition, a suggested condition, that we modify, saying, requiring them to post a sign next to the exit that no alcoholic beverages will be consumed within the patio area. Enforcement of that condition is, is on the applicant.
So in the event that they did install a barrier, then that condition would not then apply, is that correct?
Yes. Well, that's an outdoor seating patio area. It's already there. But what it is, is that we want, we also want to give them the option of having to, in case in the future somebody else would reorient the building, so that there's an entry not going through the patio covers, they can still use the patio cover, I mean, the patio area for alcoholic consumption. So they don't have to come back to the city and apply for another application just like this.
Okay.
So it's just a convenience issue.
Okay, I understand. I just know that the interior of that particular restaurant is relatively small. So, all right, thank you.
And I also noticed that there are two ways that you can get out of that patio. There's also an opening on the side where the landscaping is. So I walked all the way around it. And they would have to reconfigure their front doors, because you do have to walk through the patio. There isn't a gate there. So would you make them put in a solid, or could they have what they have now? It's kind of a, a heavy rod arm and design, and it's not real, real low. I mean, I think to scale over it, you know, would be a job, but they could pass something through it.
What they have right now is what it is. Basically, that's the reason why the police department is opposed to consumption of alcoholic beverages within the patio area. So whether there's one exit or two exits in that area, I mean, it's still convenient for people to walk away with drinks. So now, that's why we are only, we're only, we're imposing a condition where they can only consume alcohol at this time within the building itself.
Right. And I noticed there are two "no smoking on the patio" signs. So it wouldn't be a problem, I don't think, for them to add no alcohol consumption in the patio, too. So, because they do have two rather large signs that say no smoking. Commissioner, Mr. Town, did you want to ask?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just to follow up on your question as well, the condition of 18 requires a fixed immovable barrier, so we're not defining the design for this barrier. We will review it in conjunction with the police department if the applicant decides to, to allow alcoholic consumption in that outside patio area. But the intent is to not have direct access to the parking lot.
But that's good, because right now it's open and it's friendly. And if they have to put a solid wall, if that was a requirement, I don't think that I'd like that as well. But it's a nice place. And I would think you would want to sit out there with maybe a beer or a glass of wine in your hand, too. So, something that the owner was going to have to decide to do. Commissioner Roundtree or Trappell?
Yeah, I'd just like, Mr. Chua, if you could explain, and I'm having a conflict between condition number 15 and condition number 18. If you could clarify that for me? I don't know whether the page number on our packet is at the bottom or at the top, but it's page 28 at the bottom, page 6 at the top.
Okay. Sorry, there you go. Right now, we are not allowing, we're not allowing onsite consumption of alcoholic beverages at the patio area. That's condition number 15. Now, condition number 16 is a condition where we allow them to do it, provided that they basically have not direct access to the, to the outside of the premises. So this actually gives them the flexibility in the future, in case they want to, let's say, decide that they want to allow onsite consumption in the patio area, they can reconfigure the building. Because if we only put condition number 15 on it, and the applicant in the future decides they want to use the patio area for consumption of alcoholic beverages, then they have to come back to the city for another, you know, hearing like this.
Okay?
I see where you're going. It just seems to me if maybe, sure.
Mr. Heer?
Heer wants to...
Thank you. Thank you. Chair Reynolds. Condition 15 is a standard condition that police would have for alcohol when you're going to have a patio. And so that was, that condition was put in by the police. And looking at this, we had a meeting and obviously are concerned, knowing this particular patio and how it was modified, we had the concern of the ability for the owner, if he's busy to control alcohol consumption in this patio area at this particular kind of way it's set up. So our response was to add 18 and to modify number 18 to, at this time, 18 override 15, because we were saying you cannot do it unless you modify it. But if you do modify it, then it's still the patio area and you're allowed to do it.
Okay, that helps me, thanks.
And then we also requested that they put a sign up to notify, obviously, patrons, oh, by the way, you can't go outside right now unless it's modified.
Commissioner Roundtree?
Lawyers, lawyers, huh? A comparison, maybe, to what the old Chuy's Restaurant or what is now Smash Burger. There's an outside patio. They've been able to consume alcohol there. I was there this weekend. It has a barrier. Is this the barrier that we're referring to that would have to be built in order for this establishment to serve alcohol on the patio? Thank you.
Well, they have unusual front doors at this restaurant. So they would have to, you know, put something new to direct.
And I would assume that, given the size of the interior of the restaurant, which is teeny, that they're going to want to use the outside patio. So this is just their roadmap of how to make it work. Thank you.
Okay, Commissioner Ferris?
Let me just see if I got this completely straight, so it's easy. Right? Condition 15 says, no alcohol outside the building except for the patio. Condition 18 says, you can't do it on the patio unless you have this barrier there. And there's also, they have to have, and if they don't have the barrier, they have to have signs that basically say, no, you can't really have alcohol on the patio. Is that right?
Yes.
Fantastic. There's a lot of going back and forth. I just wanted to make sure I had it clear in my head. Thanks.
And I would assume there'd be something inside or each server, if somebody ordered alcohol, would have to say, you cannot take this out to the patio, too. So, okay. I do not have a card for the applicant. If someone in the audience would like to come forward and speak for the applicant, you're welcome to do it, but then please fill out a card after you speak. So you do have 15 minutes. If you give me your name and city residence, please. And good evening.
Good evening. I'm Laura Plasmeyer.
I'm Jack Plasmeyer. Good evening. We're the owners of Snapper Jacks.
Okay, so I understand what 15 and 18. I just wanted to know if we put up some type of a gate, if that would be acceptable? Because our front doors are situated kind of in the middle of the patio. Is that a police department question, or?
You mean a gate right from the side or from the edge of the property into your?
Patio.
Is that what you're talking about? And also, you'd have to do something with the backside, too?
I can clarify.
Yeah. Mrs. Chua?
Yeah, when I spoke to the police department about this, their main opposition to that, to consuming alcohol there is because people can just walk away. They have direct access out of the premise. Now, if that was totally enclosed, then you're going to have to provide a door entry into the building from another portion of the building, not within the patio itself. Because what happens is that for you to go inside the building, you have to go through the patio.
And you have to go like this.
So that is basically what the police department's concern is, that when people, when we, if we allow consumption of alcohol in the patio itself, and there is direct access to the parking lot from the patio, then people can just walk away with the alcoholic beverages in their hand. Now, if there, now, condition number 18 is basically giving you the option in the future, in case you want to reorient the building or the doors around, that if you enclose the patio without direct access into the parking lot, without going through the building, then you will be allowed to have consumption of alcoholic beverages within the patio area. I hope I made it clear.
I think that Mr. Town, the planning director, wanted to make a statement.
Yes, just to say that, I mean, these types of details are something that we'd work out through a design that you would submit to the community development department. We review it in conjunction with the police department. We typically don't get into this type of detail in terms of design issues at the hearing. The way that the, that the conditions are structured were intended, I would say, by the police department to provide a certain level of flexibility. Hopefully, you know, their intent is clear, and we would work with you and the police department to define the final design solution to it. So as long as you're comfortable with these conditions, 15 and 18, then I think we can move forward. If you have any concerns about those, then, then we would need to, you know, continue this to a later date. But again, these types of design details, we routinely work out directly with you.
We appreciate the flexibility. So, thank you.
Okay, any, did you want to make any other statement, then?
Just maybe the fact that we have two other locations. We do have beer and wine license at those locations.
Would you speak into the microphone so it's picked up on television?
Okay, I'm sorry. We have two other locations with beer and wine license at each location. And we have excellent standing with ABC. And we're experienced operators. We've been in business for about 12 years, so.
And patios?
Yeah, we have patios as well.
Okay, thank you. Are there any questions? Commissioners, thank you. And you'll have the privilege to come back for rebuttal.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we'll go back to staff. Is there anything else, Mr. Chua or Mr. Town, that needs to be included?
None at this time.
Nothing? Okay, and you have a chance to come back to the microphone if you'd like to. But other than that, okay, you accept all the conditions. Okay, thank you. With that, I will close the public hearing. And now is the time for a motion deliberation. Commissioner Roundtree?
Well, thanks. My first response would be Loopy's Restaurant, where, if I remember correctly, I could sit outside, have a beer with my Mexican food, and walk directly from the outside patio directly to my car if I chose to. I don't have to go through the restaurant to get to the patio. I can go directly... I can go directly to the patio, sit down, and then someone can come serve me. I guess my point is, I, I hope you’re flexible, because these are proprietors, been in town here, they know what they’re doing. And if it’s simply putting up a gate or a wall, hopefully, we can work with them and figure it out. It doesn’t seem like that big of a deal. I know there are conditions that the Police Department has, but I’m hopeful, from what Mr. Town has said and what you’ve said, that we can work with them once we go through and maybe, you know, approve this. But, thank you.
Commissioner Chappell?
Yes, I’m ready to make a motion, if, if the chair would like to do it. I’d like you to go ahead and move. The applicant seems to be comfortable with, with the conditions as they are in the packet. So, I’d like to move that the Planning Commission approve SUP 2012-70436, based on the following findings and subject to the attached suggested conditions in our packet. Staff, I think you did a fine job.
Any other comments? Commissioner Ferris?
I, too, support the motion. I do share the urging for staff and the Police Department and the proprietors to come up to some mutual agreeable solution that can meet the, the needs of everybody on this. I certainly don’t want it to be a sticking point of, of the unique circumstances here. But hopefully, we, if we all understand why, what we’re trying to do here, then we can try to come up with some solution, so, thanks.
And I did want to state, I did have another speaker’s card, but he has indicated that it’s okay that he not speak, so, I’m very sorry.
Okay.
Any other comments to the motion? Other than I support the motion, too, and please do fill out a card before you leave. There might be some on the table outside. And with that, then, final comments to your motion, Commissioner?
Just after the meeting, I’m looking for the closest patio I possibly could find. No, no other comments.
Okay, would you please vote?
Motion passed, five-zero.
And there is a ten-day right of appeal period on that. And we’ll continue on with six C. If the clerk would please open that hearing?
Hearing advertised as required by law is hereby open to consider Agenda Item Six C regarding case LU 2011-70410 and Z 2011-70412. Applicant: City of Thousand Oaks. Request to change general plan land use element and zoning to conform with tract 5377. Amend land use element from high, high-density residential, fifteen to thirty dwellings per net acre, to medium-density residential, four-point-six to fifteen dwellings per net acre. And change zoning from RPD 20U residential plan development up to twenty dwellings per net acre to RPD 7U residential plan development up to seven dwellings per net acre. Location: West Side of Lunt 2 Park Road at Ramona Drive.
Thank you. And I would remind the commissioners that this is a recommendation of the City Council. Good evening, Mr. Specter. If you’d like to give the staff report?
Good evening, Madam Chair, and members of the Planning Commission. We’re here tonight to make a recommendation to the City Council concerning a proposed amendment to the general plan, the land use element of the general plan, from the designation of high-density residential to medium-density, and a corresponding zone change from RPD twenty units per acre to RPD allowing up to seven units per acre. This is an aerial view of the property in question, bounded in red. There’s a housing project that was approved in 2006, a tract, basically a condominium tract, some attached, some detached. It’s under construction. It’s probably a third of the way built, it looks like. This property is a little over fourteen-and-a-half acres in size, and the, this tract that’s under construction involves thirteen detached homes and sixty-nine townhomes with a density of six-point-six-two dwellings per acre. And the issue here, or the important point, is that this development is being built at a density that’s far less than is allowed under either the, the general plan land use element or the zoning. I’d like to point out that this, these proposed changes will have no, impose no limitations on the existing development. It can still proceed as it’s been approved and planned. This is a, a general plan land use map showing the existing high-density designation of the general plan in brown. And if this project is approved, it’ll change to medium-density. Now, an important aspect of this proposal to be considered involves Measure E. Measure E was passed by the voters in 1996, and the upshot of that is, in order to approve an increase in the cumulative number of dwellings in the entire general plan land use element, it requires voter approval. And what I mean, the cumulative number of dwellings, the, the limit is the number of dwellings that were permitted when Measure E was adopted in 1996. Now, there’ve been a number of amendments to the general plan since 1996, and cumulatively, they’ve reduced the residential capacity of the general plan by one-hundred-and-eighty-six dwellings. And staff refers to this as the Measure E bank. This proposal will reduce that general plan capacity by another two-hundred-and-eighteen dwellings, thereby increasing that Measure E bank. And the next slide shows a table indicating that total one-hundred-and-eighty-seven plus two-eighteen is two-hundred, four-hundred-five, excuse me. Now, not only does the change align the current development with the general plan designation, but it also similarly aligns the development with the, with the zoning. What I mean by that, the as-built density is six-point-six-two dwellings per net acre. The proposed zoning will allow up to seven units per acre, so the two are consistent. And this is a zoning map, shows the surrounding zoning, and the, the site in question changing from allowing twenty units per acre to seven units per acre. There’s another legal constraint that we must consider when we’re doing these kinds of changes. There’s a government co-provision that prevents the city from reducing residential develop, development density for any property unless it can find a couple of things. One is that the change is consistent with the, the general plan and the housing element of the general plan, and that there’s remaining inventory of land in the city to accommodate the city’s share of the regional housing need. And that, for those commissioners or members of the public that aren’t familiar with that, there’s actually a number that’s assigned to every city as to how many housing units they have to accommodate. In this case, there is no problem with this provision, because the changes don’t reduce the number of units that were anticipated for the site in the housing element land inventory. And so, this particular site’s not needed to satisfy the city’s arena. Environmentally, there’s no possibility that this site could cause a physical effect on the environment or a significant effect, so it’s an exempt project as far as sequo. So, staff recommends that the commission recommend this project to the City Council. And with that, I’ll answer any questions you might have.
Thank you. Are there questions? Mr. Specter, Commissioner Ferris?
Thank you. You mentioned that state law requires we can’t reduce the residential density unless there’s a couple of factors. One that’s consistent with the general plan, the fact that we’re doing it concurrently meets that criteria, correct?
Yes, yes.
You also mentioned the RENA assessment. Is it wise for us, if we were to recommend approval for this to the City Council, that we include that as part of our findings, to make sure that there isn’t any concern as to whether we’re just focusing on general plan consistency?
That would be reasonable, yes.
Okay, all right, thanks.
Commissioner Tapkin?
I, I guess, a quick question. Why was it this time when the project was approved? I guess I’m curious as to why we’re, we’re so far behind at this particular point. This has been on the books for a long time. This project’s under construction, et cetera, so why tonight?
Mr. Town?
I guess, to be quite candid, it, it really wasn’t a top priority compared to other projects that we had going on at the time. In, in a very real sense, this is a housekeeping item, bringing the general plan and zoning into consistency with the actual as-built density, and we simply had other projects that were higher priority.
Any other questions, Commissioners? No? Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Specter.
You’re welcome.
I do have one... Nope. No cards. Anything else that needs to be added, Mr. Specter or Commissioners? I just remembered when we did see this project, and the Park District was involved because of the State Coach Gym Museum, and keeping the public away from that area and jumping the fence and, and the wetlands and everything throughout there. And I know that there was a lot of discussion and good consensus during that time, so, and I’m glad to see it being built. Anything else? Then I’ll close. Commissioner Ferris?
Just as a follow-up to, to that finding, that, that would be a finding for the zone change? The, the RENA assessment?
For both, actually.
It would be for both? And is there maybe some assistance we might be able to get from the...
Mr. Heer or...
City Attorney and staff?
He’s working on it. Or Mr. Town?
I would just suggest that, that the, and I was focusing on the land use amendment, because that is, that is what, is what determines Measure E, but we could apply it to both. That the amendment would, this would be a fourth finding under the LU. It could be a third finding under the zone change, that the, the amendment and zone change would provide additional capacity to meet current and future RENA allocations dictated by the state.
It would be able to accommodate future capacity?
It, it would provide additional capacity, because right now, we have one-hundred-and-eighty-seven dwelling units in our bank that we could use, if needed, to meet future or current...
Oh, I see where you’re going. Is that, is that the, the land use amendment actually allows for additional, additional units to be placed elsewhere in the city for...
It’s the land use change tonight that creates those additional two-hundred-and-eighteen units that would go into the bank that we could use for housing, either for affordable under the RENA requirements or other housing in the city without ever exceeding that nineteen-ninety-six threshold.
Okay, well, there are, I guess, a couple of things. One, the, in the staff report, I thought it was relating to the 2008-2014 housing assessment of what the actual as-built housing would be, and this would not change that, because it’s, it affects the property that’s going to be built at six-point-six-two...
Yes. I think we can add something like what’s on one of the slides that just, just says the change is, will be consistent with the general plan, you know, with the change to high-density, I mean, to medium-density, and that the remaining land inventory of the housing element is, will remain adequate to accommodate the city’s share of the RENA.
And that’s, that’s the, that was the main thing, because you had mentioned those two things we had to, to actually look at, and I didn’t find the second one in the findings, so I just wanted to make sure that we try to cover ourselves by, by doing that.
It formalizes it.
Okay, that sounds good to me.
Okay, any other discussion or questions, staff? Now, I’ll close the public hearing, and motion deliberation. Commissioner Ferris?
I’ll go ahead and make a motion. I’m, I’m happy to help clean up some stuff here, so, let me move that the Planning Commission recommended the City Council, we approve land use element 2011-7410 and zone change 2011-7412, based on the following findings, as amended to include the, the RENA finding.
Thank you. Comments? Commissioner Tapkin?
I’m going to support the motion, and I’m going to support it for, for many reasons. I’m very familiar with this property, having been associated and looked at this for a number of years, both as, when it was designated as multifamily housing, as well as the whole process that it went through in regarding this new development and the development behind it. The fact that this is cleanup at this particular point, Mr. Town, you answered that question, but more importantly, I think, from my perspective, is that we add to our bank, and that we have the ability to use these units in other locations without having a Measure E issue, I think, is vitally important to this community’s future. So, with that, I will support it.
Thank you. Other comments? Final comments? Please vote.
Motion passed, five-zero.
Thank you. And that was a recommendation of the City Council. We’ll continue on with seven A. Mr. Town, Community Development Department refer, reports and referrals, and I do have one card. Do you want the speaker speak first? Okay, Mr. Nick Kidway, if you’d like to come forward and state your name and city residence. And I guess you have, what, five minutes, or...
Nick Kidway, resident of Newbury Park, director of concern, City of Thousand Oaks, Honorable Chair, Planning Commissioners. Thank you for letting me speak on this item, which is, does not require action on any case, but nonetheless, I think it’s very important, and even though I don’t get any mileage out of the remarks that I make, I will still put it on the record that we need to make some changes. I think with the city ad-built out, with, I don’t know, the reasoning that so many cases are handled over the counter, I did spend, because of the Hooters hearing, I did spend some time in the basement, getting some names and all that, and they were busy. I mean, constantly busy with projects. And that’s why, one of the things that is missing, I hope it will come back, is the development report, because there are all these cases that do not require Planning Commission approval, but they are being handled by staff, and people have a right to know what’s happening in their community. If, TOTV will show this report, which is part of the agenda packet. You see tonight’s hearing on the, on the first column, and then there are almost three blanks, and the only thing that’s coming up is COLS. And I know I’ve said this before, but I want to, I’m hoping that citizens will ask that we get the bank for our buck. Even today, with four items on the agenda, the meeting has only lasted an hour. I am one of those who used to be here till two or three in the morning. That’s not good. But at least the meeting should be three, four hours of, because of the staff time, the time that is spent in this chamber to get it prepared, that you should move to bi-monthly meetings or quarterly meetings, or as-needed meetings. I mean, it’s disgusting. I mean, tomorrow’s meeting, just take a look at it for the City Council. Really, they should not be holding the meeting. There’s nothing on the agenda that is time-sensitive, and it’s, and it’s not policymaking. If it was policymaking, and they were going to discuss things and take an hour, I can see that, but just to appoint people to approve certain dollar amounts. And then, you know, as somebody who’s getting gray hair and been involved in the city for a long time, we have moved from, you know, the paper age to the electronic age, and I find it very frustrating that the signs go up, and the COLS case is a, is, is a great example, that I wrote down the dates, that November eighteenth is when the conditions were completed. And then, the signs went up on January eighteenth, and I drive every day in that area, so I’ve seen the sign. And then, the final conditions will come on February fourth, and the final reports will come on the, on the, on the nineteenth. I don’t think there’s anything in the law that says that the final reports have to be done before the public is notified. I mean, since 1992, we have had this unwritten rule that nothing is disclosed until the agenda packet is available. I mean, what kind of a closed society, I mean, North Korean kind of dictatorship is this? Once the, you should really have these cases open online, so that the people can see. You should really have these cases open online, so that the people can see what is being done. I mean, people should be involved in it. And really, I mean, these things, nowadays, these projects are so small that most people don't really care or opposed to it, but at least have it open, just in case there are Hooters that comes in, and it doesn't slide by underneath the radar. This project was really debated a lot by the residents. They thought this was going to be a Pandora's Box, it would be really bad for the Kelly Park Homes, and one of the things was the hours of the store, and now the hours are being changed, but, I mean, who would know that it is? And if people are opposed to it, just sending notices to seven homes that are within 300 feet, that's not the American way. That's not what this country stands for. I would appreciate if some of these changes that I have talked to are done. You have a close ear to the City Council. If you can tell them to start at 6:30 like you do, that gives people a chance to have a dinner and participate more. In fact, 7 o'clock is even better. People don't know, CRPD has meetings at 7:30, and they let you speak at the beginning of the agenda and at the end of the agenda. But there's nothing controversial there, there's nothing... There's no TV, so they are more open. The TV should really not be a hindrance, it should really enlighten us. Let's get to the internet age. Thank you, Mrs. Reynolds, for letting me speak.
Thank you, Mr. Kidway. Mr. Town?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I did want Mr. Kidway to speak first, so I could provide some responses. First of all, with regard to the upcoming Planning Commission agenda, we only put items on here when we're pretty sure that they are going to come to public hearings, so we try not to add items until we're 95% certain that they will, in fact, come to a public hearing, and that's why you see some blanks here, but we do have other projects in the wings. It looks like, however, we will not be holding a meeting on February 4th unless something comes in this week due to newspaper ad requirements. So, it looks like your next meeting will be on March 4th with the Coles case, and probably we'll have reorganization that same night. As far as the development activity report that Mr. Kidway refers to, that should be online, so I will double-check that after this meeting, but that is a report which summarizes all of the community development department's activities, from large to small, including projects that are not considered by the Planning Commission or City Council but are handled administratively, and that is updated monthly and should be online, so I will look into that. As far as the overall schedule of Planning Commission meetings, one of the things that... And our tentative schedule to meet every two weeks, one of the comments from the business community that we've heard over the years is that timely processing of applications is vital to them. And we're sensitive to that, and by keeping to at least a regular scheduled series of meetings every two weeks, it enables us to respond in what I think is a time-sensitive manner to development applications and not cause them to wait unnecessarily. We obviously try to condense hearings, as in tonight, although it was a relatively brief meeting, we had three hearings, and we do that to try to make the most efficient use of staff and Planning Commission and applicant resources. The staff reports, they do become public as part of the packet, and although we are working on it prior to that, we don't make those available prior, because the truth of the matter is, they're often last-minute changes, and that's just sort of the nature of the beast. So, we make those available as soon as possible, but obviously, the dates on page 42 of your packet have also to do with our internal processing, and also for the required public notices and signs. And then finally, anybody who's interested in any of these cases that we're discussing tonight can always come down to City Hall, look in the case file, meet with the planners, and they can give them the very current status of any of these projects and show them the plans as of that date. So, hopefully that answers at least some of Mr. Kidway's questions and comments. I would also like to point out to the commission, on page 44, we have a summary of cases that the City Council will be hearing, that the commission has recently considered, and the applicant did appeal the December 17th decision of the Planning Commission with regard to the New Home Companies project at Warwick and Mayflower. We don't have a date yet for City Council, but that should be coming up soon. And then also, on January 22nd, the Council will be considering the Batia case, as well which you considered back in late September. And that's all I had at this time. Thank you.
Thank you. Minutes and resolutions of the meeting, December 17th, 2000, and it should be 12. I just caught that. Okay. So, it should be the minutes and resolutions, December 17th, 2012. Could I have a motion to approve, please?
So moved.
Thank you, Mr. Tapkeen. Vote, please.
Motion passed, 5-0.
Thank you. And AB 1234 reports? Anything at all? Okay. Commission comments? Commissioner Ferris?
I just wanted to follow up a little bit on some of the things that Mr. Kidway brought up. One, I guess a development report, I'm assuming it probably is online, but sometimes when we... Well, when we revamp the website or something like that, the link which we used to know how to get to the development report isn't there, and so, yes, I'm sure I could probably do a search on it, but not everybody knows how to do it, and so, if there's some way where we can find where it might be a little bit easier for people to see what the activity is, I think that that's... That could very well be helpful, and hopefully, maybe if we can look into that, that would probably be good. The agenda packets being online and not at the last minute, I share the concern about a lot of stuff coming in at the last minute and the public not seeing it. The purpose of the Brown Act is really to kind of make sure people know what the various bodies are, in fact, going to be entertaining, and if they don't know what the details of the reports are, it's hard for them to follow it. Not sure how much what we can do except to urge staff to see if they can try and get it, you know, get it all tidy within, you know, at the time the agenda is there, but, I mean, I think it's a good comment, and it's something we should always continue to strive on, and we get supplementals all the time. But it is a good comment, and I... Hopefully, we can do something about that. Thanks.
Thank you. Any other commission comments? I just wanted to ask the commissioners, when I was around Snap or Jax, I didn't notice a sign talking about the hearing. Was there one there? There was nothing in the window. I walked all the way up to Jan's Road to look.
We post the signs ourselves and take photos of the signs when they're posted and keep those in the permanent file, so.
So, there probably was one somewhere around, but I just happened to notice that there wasn't one, even though I knew right where the place was. But I know in the housing, when we're looking at things, I always look for that sign, so... Okay. Commissioner Roundtree?
Yeah, the sign was actually on Jan's Road, facing McDonald's.
Facing Mc... Oh, okay, so it was there on Jan's Road. Okay. So, it was at the edge of the property is what it was. Okay. Thank you. I'm glad to know that. Anything else, commissioners? Okay, with that, I'll wish everybody a Happy New Year, and we will adjourn to, even though we're not... It's not definite that it's canceled, we will adjourn to the February 4th, 2013 meeting. Good evening.